That's welcome. Welcome.
This is worship. Thank you. I enjoyed this meeting. You don't stand. I was very blessed. We shared with good activity. It's fun. Then you guys.
Hey, how are you doing?
Hi.
Thanks. We should keep her back there. Exactly. This is first time. What?
He's around.
I think they're all about you.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's so. I'm not, you know.
Watching. Definitely.
It's okay. The tea is Georgia. And I think they said.
But let's see in the house.
I don't.
Not around then. I always got bad blood to pump it.
This actual.
That's.
Where's the girl?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
No, that's what I told that which you should go to. Let's take back to events. So it's. Has to be.
That would be cool.
It's also maybe fine, but yeah.
I. It's my switch. I know. I have to, I know. That's true. I just. Run. You know, we were at. I'm a mess. So yeah. If things get interesting, I might. I get to. Oh, okay. I can stop. Um, well, welcome. I'm gonna call the, um, Seesbury Slinging Commission to order. It's seven o'clock. So, um, thank you all for attending. We have a full, all of our commissioners, so we will not be sitting alternates tonight. Um, doesn't you learn coffee with the, you know, minutes?
Sure. So referring to the, uh, Minutes of the Planning Commission, regular meeting, dated July ninth, twenty twenty four. Then everyone have any comments on getting one. Lines one, two, forty six. Eight minutes. The. Page two, lines forty seven, three, eighty one. Here I go, commenters, I think most of the assessments minutes as.
Nine, seven, three. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting all these elements, uh, sure, sure, advanced two thousand twelve, being through say I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? We wish to carry on.
Okay.
And, um, we had a request to change our agenda, so do I have a motion?
Yep, I'd like to make motion that we, uh, take item number four, uh, planning regulatory poison updates specifically tariff fill dead with plan update, uh, and movement to forward to general division business. I'll second with.
Any discussion? All those in favor of altering the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And we should carry on, say, we do. Friends. So we are going to, um.
Manager, um, Robert Collins is here tonight, um, from SLR. And in case anybody doesn't know, we just, we just did a walk around, uh, the Tariffill Village for the last hour, the entire commission, and, um, and did Robert and staff. So we made some observation and just kind of got a sense and want, we wanted to have all of the commissioners have eyes on the community at the same time, so they have common reference points as being brought together. Robert's just kind of walked us through where we are and where we're headed, uh, as part of this planning process.
Okay. Uh, just get up against me. I'm sure I face everybody. Uh, again, it's a pleasure to be, uh, invite you on tonight. I'm Barbara Collins. I'm a professional planner with SLR, um, which is a consulting firm that's based out of, um, Cheshire, Connecticut. Um, I'm not sure how much I know that most of the planning commission number probably know, you know, if it was an RFP process and then previous to that, it was the QOCB process that then led to us working on this, uh, being selected and working on this tariff, uh, be able to clap. Um, we have had a whole series of activities today, so if I'm a little not coherent, I'm just looking now if I talked too fast, because we did start at two o'clock, uh, or three o'clock, this is a stakeholder meetings, and then also does, as Stuart mentioned, the walking tour. And then now this. Um, so if you have any questions, just let me know. If I'm going too fast, we're not covering something. Um, but our whole team is excited to, um, get on the way with those, the project, when we are just giving it away. Um, earlier, if you were not into walking tour, there were like four of us that were actually present from our, uh, from the SLR team, including myself, who's in the middle. Again, I'm the project manager and I'm the professional planner. We've done, uh, for twenty five years of experience, working on some neighboring patient plans, as well as long range plans like QOCDs and significant boat updates and things like that. Um, Mark Aaron Looney is also our, uh, leader, um, is also, uh, like, which is in charge with the project, but he doesn't have the walking tour. Um, Mark is a local resident. He actually lives at Aod. He also has been working, um, with the predecessor company to SLR, which is Navon, they, they approved, like some of you may have remembered that company, and we did a lot of work, you know, and my, my, so a lot of work in Sinsbury that we kind of talked about during, uh, the process. And Mark specifically, he's a registered landscape architect. He used to oversee the landscape architecture team, um, that's a part of this process, um, and many of the projects that, uh, you know, like the downtown Sinsbury streetscape improvements and stuff like that, or projects that our company worked on, maybe some more. On Suzanne is also, um, uh, right on side next to me, and she is a registered landscape architect, um, oversee kind of the site assessment, as well as the hardscape and kind of like, uh, uh, concept building, uh, for a project. And then Taylor Diego, um, who's on the left side, is a planner, works with me correctly, and Taylor will be focused on gathering the community profile, um, business inventory information, uh, depending, she will also be working with me closely, look at like zoning, uh, adjustments and things like that, and like, the regulations. Um, our overall team though does include other subject matter experts that, um, that we can tap into if, as we've all been to study, if we end up needing some assistance from them. They include, uh, environmental planners, uh, also climate resilience and sustainability. Mila Swogan is part of our, had our team on that if they need to finish and to maybe that. Um, we do have active mobility planning through Holly Carter as part of our team. Um, Holly is a, is a regional expert on micro mobility and multi-level trails and things like that, so that we can connect for, um, not only the connectivity within the town, but also connect with some of the trails and things that we actually are running while in the vicinity. Um, but then we also have transportation engineering that we can tap into, to look at, uh, you know, some of the issues related to various, I think, a friend sort of passing by intersection issues. I know we talked about the cities, so about association earlier, those, they were telling us about some of the unfortunate, best rain, actually, I'd say, look, things like that, so we want to get sure that I can take that. Then you plug, wake and stop. Uh, we also have public engagement experts, which I'm part of that team as well, and we are already doing the various public engagement activities that we talked about. Um, just a quick overview of our process, and we are at the very beginning, and I'll have a follow-up slide, which will actually show the schedule, and then we'll, we'll narrow that down to like what we're really going to be doing in the next three months. So this is kind of like a broad brush overview, like, we're getting the project underway, uh, project initiation, so right now, we're at the very, very first stage, and we're, we're actually having this planning commission meeting. We had the walking tour, we talked with some stakeholders, so that process is well underway. Uh, that will be followed, and we're already starting to work on it, which will be the research data and data collection. Um, you know, we'll be collecting census data, we'll be using stuff that we get from the town, as well as, uh, sources, but then also we'll be getting stuff that we get from the residents and the civic association, um, uh, and any other sources of data, like the historic stuff and all that, that we talked about with you earlier. Suzanne, the landscape architecture team, will be synthesizing that, will be putting together community profile, which will be available. Um, but then the landscape architect will actually be comparing maps that will kind of show that analysis as far as like the roads, the trails, uh, land use, zoning, all those types of things will come together in the next couple of months. Um, that, the site assessment, then we'll, we'll take all that detail and look at it in more detail and start to identify potential emerging, uh, themes and priorities of opportunities that constraints, which will share that with the community, as well as the planning commission at the, uh, not only planning commission meetings, but then also the open houses. That will lead to then creating a planned vision, like an overall kind of like guiding principles for us for the plan, and then start to look at some alternatives, which really will mainly take the form of recommendations. Um, the final plan will then come out of that, and then the final plan will also include a next step matrix and, and the plan adoption, which will be discussed as far as, you know, how does the plan move forward? Is it a, is it a reference document, or is it something that actually gets a got to? We can work through those details as we get closer to them. But I think the thing that's most important to mention here is that we really, based on what we understand from talking with town staff, um, as well as the planning commission, is that this plan is really going to kind of bring together a lot of the ideas and needs for the community, um, to make it, um, a very sustainable, um, uh, kind of evolving community, um, and that there's quick wins that needs potentially happen, there's short-term improvements, and then there's also long-term projects and long-term visions. And this plan will hopefully categorize all that, so that, you know, the community, as well as planning commission and the town could put forward the projects that need to happen like right away, maybe, um, you know, working with, um, uh, code enforcement and things like that, the zoning enforcement, um, but then also getting stuff put into grant applications, funding mechanisms, the town budget, stuff like that for longer, for like hardscape and, and things like that. But also policies like related to housing, which we were just talking about, like, how can we make sure that the housing, uh, continues to be improved, but also remains affordable? Um, uh, and, uh, um, uh, the variety of housing continues to be in place. Okay, so taking a look at the schedule, this is like more detailed, that's everything that was on that last one, and it kind of puts together, like, this is kind of hard to read, but basically you can see that we have from July until the February timeframe, which is, maybe I'll just call up hearing, kind of point to it. So, you know, we're right here, we're in this month right now, so we're just getting things started. We have the kickoff meeting, and then over the next three months, we're going to be doing a lot of public engagement, and I'll talk about what each one of these stars is in a minute. But then in the October and December timeframe, we'll really be working on these steps of, uh, sort of putting a plan together and then getting the vision, and then was the ultimate goal of having that final plan prepared by February and that, uh, implementation table. So that would be in a good position to then start to gear up for the, to the funding cycle that will be coming up right away after that, so that maybe some of those early projects can be fed right into it. Um, so looking at the schedule for the next three months, um, and like, so we can really focus on that, um, and get your all's, um, involvement and buy-in, is that right now, obviously, we're in July, we just had the stakeholder talks, as I mentioned, they're going to be continuing to evolve. Um, we had the walking tour, um, and we will continue to kind of come back and take a look at sites and things like that as likely needed. Um, and then we're having this kickoff meeting to not only get, communicate everything with the planning commission, but also with the public, so that you know what's going to be going on with the study, and can start being involved and getting the word out. In August, uh, we're going to have, uh, there is going to be, um, early August, we're going to be getting a project story map, is what it's called, but it's basically a website that's going to be linked on the town's website, and this, this will be the resource of information about the study, the goals, and it will continue to evolve throughout the study, so that information is being shared about what's going on, and maybe to do some public engagement through the website. We are going to talk about that, and I'll show it to you, the draft and, uh, and the next slide. Um, and then the next thing will be a community survey. Uh, right now, I'll talk about that a little bit more, but we're talking about a late August, early September timeframe for that survey. You know, it's not necessarily the best time of the year, but then there's always constraints with any time of the year. Uh, but we will work very closely with the community, as well as with the town, to make sure that we get as much notification out, and if we need to extend the date, if we find that we're, we need to have more response or something like that, well, well, we can extend that gate a little bit, but for right now, we're looking at that as target. Um, and then when we get into September, in early September, we would get back together with the planning commission, um, hopefully, um, you know, we will have a healthy survey results, and we can actually report them at that meeting, and, uh, and then also start to talk about the first open house workshop, which would be then coming in late September. Um, and then also start to give you some initial feedback on some of the data and site analysis that we're having. So that's what we'll be coordinating with, on town staff for early September. Late September, we would also, and we'll be coordinating very closely, and we could even maybe talk about some dates tonight, but we want to then have that first open house, um, which will, will put, select the location here in Tariffill. It'll be an open house where people can drop in, uh, during a series of hours, like maybe from, you know, five o'clock to eight o'clock, or four to seven, or something like that, whatever is best for the community, and you don't have to come, um, you know, the one thing that's good about an open house is it allows you to drop in and participate at a convenient time for you, rather than coming to like, uh, only a seven o'clock presentation. So hopefully that will allow for greater involvement because of the flexibility. Um, and at the work, at, at the house, we would have the survey results available to be reviewed and to analyze. We will have some of the initial site analysis available, but we'll make sure that we have a couple of activities based on like what we've heard from talking to initial conversations with the community or from the survey results. Maybe there's something that the community seem to be split on based on the results, and we might want to explore that, sure, there, or maybe pinpoint locations of traffic intersection problems or something like that. So we'll make sure, and, and those activities will be, you know, like a dotting exercise or a sticky note where you can write your comments and things like that. So talking about the survey in a little bit more detail, um, again, we're talking about August sixth, running from August sixth to September sixth, so it's like, uh, the last two weeks of August, and then the week, uh, and it goes beyond Labor Day. Um, initially, that's about a three-week period, and like I said, we can extend that, it will, will keep you all posted with, uh, the survey results, um, you know, and we'll, uh, we'll talk with Steph also about what we think would be a good target, uh, response rate based on some other recent surveys that the town has conducted. The survey will be, um, a virtual platform, which you might be familiar with from having used that maybe for the PRCD, maybe the housing plan. We will make sure, though, that there's paper copies available as well, and we'll coordinate where they can be, um, distributed, and I know that, I think, town staff has also been talking about maybe, um, delivering or having paper copies very readily available within the Tariffill itself. The entire town of Sinsbury, though, will be invited to participate in the survey, um, but there will be, uh, questions that will kind of clarify, you know, demographic questions that will kind of clarify whether the responder is within the town or specifically within Tariffill, so we can kind of like see if there's a difference in opinions, uh, between those types of, it would be. For the range is going to be probably between twenty-five and twenty-eight questions, which is a lot of questions, but, um, it is under the threshold of maximum, uh, you know, for like maybe about a twenty-minute survey. Out of those questions, fifteen or sixteen of them will be the main questions, and then the, they would be about eight to twelve that are the demographics, which have you type of question. So if somebody wants to take it and they really have money to answer the main questions, if there is only about sixteen questions that would, to respond to. We are currently working on those, that survey, um, but, you know, we had an initial proposal, we got some feedback from town staff, we're going to work on that, and then also we will need one today, um, on the walking tour. I think we want to make sure we add some questions about the actual environment and open space, um, so we're going to be working to finalize that probably next week, and then I imagine the week after that, for town staff, we will share that with the planning commission, just to get your, you know, your final eyes on it, um, just before we then launch it on the sixth. It will be launched, um, through the, the web study, and it may be a QR code, it could be four, one, two, flyers, it's about, like, the share in various media and chats. Um, so, you know, make sure that, you know, right now, the town has pretty big communication channels now, the different work坊, with any groups that you might be involved with, uh, school associations, dog, teacher, parent-teacher associations, I think this, obviously, it's the big association, and I know you have, um, a lot of connections, uh, but any other channels or, or places where you think we should get the survey, now make sure you can pass that up to, uh, Brittany and George, um, so that we can make sure that, I've got all the bases for getting a look at that piece of mail. The project story map, we're going to launch that very systematically the first week of August. It will be parked on the town's website. Um, I'll show you a preview of it in a second, and then, um, it will be there, um, you can stay up to date with what's going on, they will have announcements about the upcoming events, but it will also start to have the, um, information being shared, um, so that everybody can be, if you're not able to attend a meeting, you can go to the website and see this. Bryce says this presentation will be uploading onto the, just, story map, that it will be available, possibly as it's launched. Okay, so let me actually show you an example, but I've actually been, uh, but hopefully this, I imagine, the wifi will work, so then. Like digital something that's.
Yeah, it would be easy if you back out of the full, uh, escape from the PowerPoint.
But we can, I'm sorry. So I could crack it. Just. This would, you'd say escape that part, those two. Well, I was going to. It's there again, back from this room. They still try to. So it's, it's, it's over here. And you drive, go back with him. Do you want me to?
Sorry about. Is it the same link that you sent against?
Uh, yeah, actually, you have it, so you have the.
Wait.
Bad. You're it. You came.
Ah.
Headed. I just go it. I did see many one. So to me, I think this is. The best.
Bye.
Good job.
My name is.
I'm not sure. Okay, so, you know, this one, again, on the, on the town's website, there will be a link that, you know, there was safety tariff, neighborhood plan, you know, here's information, and then you'll click on this thing, um, and then this one, and this is, um, um.
This town.
Basically right here, so, um, there's going to be like different tabs that you'll be able to click, so you can click on each one, and it will jump down to the different pages. So, you know, obviously, the first one is just information about the neighborhood plan, which we kind of talked about already, talks a little bit about the process, um, you know, so this will continue to grow and evolve, and we also, which we have, you know, you get, we're making up a little pictures and things like that, but town staff is working on getting us some pictures, and if you all have pictures, you can also forward that to us, and we can put them up. But, and right now, it's very, very basic, because we're just getting the project started, but it will continue to evolve. Um, we are talking about at this stage, a kind of a research and assessment, you're actually going to be in half this location, so you'll be able to see the, you know, the entire, um, you know, village, and then, um, as we get through the survey, we'll probably make that map to be able to be active, so that if you want to put a comment about Tariffill, you'll be able to click on the map and then actually play a comment here. Um, but we'll continue to explain that at the planning commission meetings, as I can change this to a document, but then make sure that's, um, up and running. Um, and then, you know, it will be the community engagement piece, um, and this is where, you know, we have information, of course, we had the stakeholder talks today, but then there'll be the community survey, will be cartier, and will actually be a vague, a place location where you can actually just click on that, and then we'll write in to take the survey if you want to take it virtually. Um, again, there might also be a QR code if you have it, you will, and you can also throw this up, and like you, the, the story map when you're following as well. Uh, and then eventually, once the survey is complete, we will then, uh, prepare a survey results report, so that everybody can tend to do that, and we'll be, and they'll use that right through this conversation as well. Thanks. Then there'll be information about the community workshops, then our, the K2, as I mentioned, there's going to be one in late September to get the project, and then I'll follow the survey, and then we'll have another one in early December, we will start to share the recommendations, some of the, and to give final feedback before you kind of finalize the. And then as we start to develop any of those visions, and, and with the, the vision for the community, or at least for the plan, um, as well as the actual documents or maybe alternatives, they'll start to be part of this location on the plan, and in many cases, they'll, they might be like vignette sketches of like alternatives with some of the hardscape, or there may be sliders where you can say, okay, this is what the town green looks like there, and then this is like some of the recommendations that we've heard of, like, it could look like maybe some evidence that like these desire, hope of what foundation. So that, that'll be something that will become, well. So obviously, the, that's just a quick walkthrough of the website, it's going to continue to evolve, and town staff is working with this closely to get more pictures, as well as to find to some of the language before we post it, but, um, do you go for it? I'm sure that, um, Joel and Brittany will get in touch with you, perhaps, and officially posting, you know, uh, within the next week, so we can also send you going, uh, take a look at it before it's posted. So that was, um, a very quick run-through of everything. Um, I'm sure there's probably some questions. Uh, is there anything I didn't cover that you'd like to ask specifically?
There's, I mean, question.
Yeah, uh, Robert, you mentioned, which they call, you know, yesterday, well, which one did you speak? Well, yes, well, uh, we, uh, Brittany helped organize those meetings, and initially, we had, we, we, like, we talked with external stakeholders, and the first group was the civic association, with you, that, with the president and two of the other members, which I think all three of them were in the audience. Um, it was very informative as far as like, you know, the history of the community and their involvement to, and that also like, that helped us, uh, with some of the information gathering, and now, so I'll have to get the word, insights of that. Uh, then we had a second, uh, group meeting that was with some of the environmental folks, um, and I, I might need some help, but I'm bringing up her solo names and.
Right, it was Sally Reader, you. Private orienting boarder time.
That's outlining.
That's an, um, Amy, I trust she, there's people, charts are out, um, hard spell water shed. The magnet is better.
And I, you know, when, you know, we talked, when I talked with Brittany and group, kind of looking at all the various stakeholders, which of course, the planning commission is a, for all stakeholders, which are also kind of guiding our work, that obviously citizens are too. Uh, we do want to talk with some of the business community, and I know that, uh, the Seesbury Main Street program is starting, or I think that's the name of that, yet, town staff, but they're finding connections with some of the business owners, and then also the civic association is, is going to be connecting us with some of those business owners. And we talked about, you know, having rolling conversations with them, maybe through, like, maybe having virtual conversations, or maybe second, under, like, games where we could talk, with these owners. Also, any kind of property owners, where there might be a property that maybe, I was like, four or five properties, um, and or, um, a large properties, um, so we want to make sure that addition to business, like we're talking, we're talking, sides, you know, single, that, actually, just like that. Um, and then, of course, there is also internal stakeholders, and we will be talking with them as we, by the process, meaning like, other town staff, like, funnel works, police department, tire, um, you know, those types of stakeholders, which we've started to identify. And once we start having some recommendations, and we know that there might need to be some buy-in, provide opportunities that we're needing, so we're making sure, watching them before, like, on spot, amongst, like you.
Does anybody update? Have questions? Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Carol Clement, and I live in Seesbury, but I'm a, a senior warden at Trinity Episcopal Church, which has been a senior non-churchy leader, so I just want to encourage you to engage the faith communities in Tariffill, so the Trinity is the largest, there's the, the one across the street from us, um, I believe there's a, a church that meets in the mill, and we all sort of have broad boundaries, uh, you know, crossing many communities, but have a, a very strong vested interest in this community, and we've been here one hundred and fifty-one years on this spot, and we definitely have some thoughts, and we want to share them, and also be a part of what kind of plan we're doing.
Yeah, I think, I think that would. Yeah, I think that would, without a doubt, we definitely want to communicate with that view directly. I think also, we talked about the school as well, like in other community facilities like the parks. But, you know, we can coordinate through Brittany's and maybe arrange a stakeholder meeting with you guys as well. If that's not, if it's separate from the civic association, or if you'd like to have your own meeting, we'll meet there.
There's a lot of Van Van Girl overlaps, so happy to meet with that.
I just wanted to clarify, that's actually why the meeting is here, because I did pass your name and the other church. And so it is important, I told them that you were really huge in community outreach, so that's why you've got us in here for the meeting at the location. Bill up and pay talk.
At your help, involved, and it's going to be crucial also to make sure that we get, you know, getting, helping us get the word out about the survey, about the open houses.
So George, uh, questions, we were going to do the second meeting in September for the open house survey.
You and I had talked, I believe you made the bill as well. I think we talked about, we technically do it on the twenty fourth, but I don't believe, we haven't reached out to the schools or find a location to do that, but we tell you that we're going to down last week. And on the night that you normally meet, which might mean you and kind of expect, community kind of expects you to be there. It's like, it might make sense to do a method. But we'll, we'll work to settle about that, but the location that happens.
Also, you serve the day, we don't need to get enough for the city, we're going out. Two just want to send in to the commission.
Yeah, so, so, so what, I mean, that's what I say is, we're, we're going to send it to you, to you, for you, but you know, we, we love your feedback, but it's difficult for, for staff to work, like nine, eight additional editors. So if you have to make your comments, and I know this evening, I'll have some comments. And typically, on, on how perhaps we cracked some of the questions. So yes, we'll send it to you, and we'll, we'll do it by you.
She's on. All right, perfect. Now, any questions?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, like regarding sightings, just have extra lot of, if anybody has any other questions that you pick up later, you know, just getting in touch with staff, let's continue the conversations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say on behalf of the Terriffill Religious Association, we appreciate the planning commission coming to our village for this particular meeting, so we could have this kickoff, and we look forward to working on this project with you.
Thank you, and we, we thank you for welcoming us here, we, we, we like being being caught very sound.
Okay, we're playing.
Thank you so much. So we have general business, it's a work record, and there's a mission, the application Z C twenty four dash nineteen. It's a
I love being from staff recommendations, it provides more consistency. Trying to get that from those events over here in So I have a copy of the memo in front of you accidentally, that will be currently due, which can be confusing to the public for what, for instance, for what ladies, we're sharing, seeing that we mail, it was about butters, the no less. However, for fish, there's something more feels they have style. So we, staff recommends making a consistent for all, and provide both sign, chime mailing, two of others for all applications that require public care. So before you, you have the proposed strikeout version, that would mean amending both zoning regulations and the center zone regulations as well.
They were surprised that it wasn't consistent.
I know, yes.
Thank you for addressing.
Yeah, I mean, because it makes sense.
We were also concerned that, you know, for the zoning commission, you know, the, we have lots of special exception applications, right? And we had to, to, to not, to only advertise in the newspaper, which, you know, is in only the classifieds. Like, I mean, that's not really transparent enough, and we should be letting the community know when, you know, what's being requested, what it is, and what the impacts are. And distinct, it's just better to be a little bit more transparent.
Do they also post it to where on the town website here with the meeting notices?
Say that one more time.
Have they also posted like on the town website or at least with meeting notices?
We post, we post
So basically, every commission page, they have a subpage for just legal notices, and basically, anyone can subscribe to any of those commission pages and be notified as soon as we post something.
So, and zoning already vote to amend this?
No, no, so what we did was, we presented these changes to zodan as part of an, essentially as a work session. And they, you know, they, they more or less blessed that draft language, I think with a couple of recommended changes. And so obviously, it's a text amendment, requires a referral from, from the, from the planning commission to find consistency with the P O C D. For any, anytime we change the text of, of the language of the, of the zoning regulations. So that's why it's to you, and then once you do it, we'll, we'll forward your recommendation onto them in, in the September timeframe, I think on September fourth, at the Republican area, at the zoning commission. And then they'll vote, they'll, they'll review and make a decision on it, yes.
So just so it's on the record, A, the sign shall be provided by the planning department.
Yeah.
Okay, and just because that, that's consistent with what's actually
I will, I will make those changes.
And then B, I think it should be planning department again.
Yep.
Okay, I just, just for, yeah, it's public, right, that's a good, that's a good.
So the subdivision regulations are okay?
No, I was just thinking about that as we were talking, I think we'll come back to, so I think we have fire from the subdivision rays. We do a butters within a hundred feet. We do not do a sign. So I think perhaps we'll bring that to you in July, in September. It's a separate document, you, you, you're the only those who can change the subdivision, right? So really, we, we're focused on getting zoning regulations flat and consistent. So if, if this is something you'd be interested in, we'd be happy to kind of just make that minor change as well.
I think it should, it should be consistent. Yeah. Yes, okay. Yeah, I think it's requiring, we shouldn't do this thing.
Makes it easier for Right, you don't have to have your little decision tree.
Right, and just, I think, just to, to, to further clarify who, who those responsibilities fall to. Staff will always do the abutted notices, will be our responsibility to do, I think we asked the applicants to submit a property owners with an identity, we do it anyway, it's safer, it's, it's more exact, and we'll know we do it right. But for the sign, we will have the applicants sign, post the sign themselves and file an affidavit that it was, that the signs were posted two weeks
What you will provide the same.
But we will provide the signs, exactly. But the applicant will have, that way we don't That takes a little bit of, of responsibility for the public care.
So I have a question, because on page four, two, it says they shall file an affidavit, do you write the form for that?
You do.
Oh, okay, so the test, so they have to file that form to say
Actually, we have to present with the public here.
Okay.
That we, right, we maintain the signs, we, we erected them on.
Okay, so, but it's a town form that you have for you, okay, for sure, that was the question.
Yep, cheers.
Any other questions? So do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I provided a motion.
I think we might be one or two, one, one short of this, so somebody might not add one.
I'll make the motions. Should I read the whole thing? Draft motion, application Z C number twenty four dash nineteen. Move the planning commission recommends approval of application Z C number twenty four dash nineteen to amend the town zoning regulations, including section sixteen and a new section eighteen. And to amend the Sinsbury Center Code, chapter seven, to provide for additional public notice options related to land use applications requiring public hearing notification under the Connecticut State statutes, based on the following finding. One, the text amendment change is consistent with the twenty twenty four P O C D effort to guide the community towards positive outcomes and provide a framework for consistent decision making with regard to conservation and development activities.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of draft motion for application Z C twenty four dash nineteen, please sign an eye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, George, anything else before we
I, I don't have anything else, I did just want to say out loud how, how how hard Brittany worked on, on putting this day together, it was a lot of work. Just so you, just so everyone knows, all the details that went into it, so I want to thank her.
She did a great job with the walking tour. So, thank you. All right, and our next meeting is the end of August, we don't meet the second Tuesday in August, but we meet the fourth Tuesday in August. Yep, sure, okay.
I think that's right.
So we have a month off, so enjoying August, okay. So without further ado, without objection, I will close this meeting at seven forty. But germs, all right, thank you.